Grow the food and people that eat the food. And so, we're working really hard to bridge that gap. And we all know that we need to step up and fix that. My other organization that I run is called North Cal Life Talk Evacuation. We evacuated animals out of this area during the wildfires. We started during tubs and we run a crew of all volunteers because we believe in helping our neighbors out. So, I think that that's something that we also want to be able to advocate for in Sonoma County. I'm not usually one to want for second place, but today I'm here to ask for your support for Alex DeCarly in second place for this, seeing that Marjorie has her hat in the ring. I read your letter, it's awesome, it's all that you wrote and ran. And you stand for a lot of the same things that we do. And I appreciate that you want to preserve agriculture and local food the same as we do. That being said, I think that we have a lot of common goals. Whichever way that this goes, I would like to see that groups like, people like you that we know are on the same team as us, that our group Communities for Good Day Family Farms and the rest of you up here, we can work together to preserve farming and local food in Sonoma County and the beautiful landscapes that farms do provide for us. So, coming from one of the non corporate farms, families of a good generation, like I said, been here for 125 years. And I would like to see the small farms be able to continue. So, I really appreciate all of your fight, all of your help in this fight. Anyways, that's it. Thank you all for your time, very much appreciate it. Thanks for having us.
Excellent. Thanks for taking my time. Okay, so we're good with that. Moving on to the next one, it's going to be the Smart Commission. There's three seats. The first two seats are done by council members of the SCA, or directors of SCA, and the third one is a non SCA appointment. So, out of the letters received, the first one is Gerard Judice from San Warren Park, James Cader Thompson from Petaluma, myself, and Mary O'Kelly. And there's two seats possible for that one.
I definitely would like to pick Mayor Todd Williams as my first pick. And for my second pick, I really like James Cader Thompson. She's like very helpful, very intelligent, a team player, which I think if you're on any board, maybe you'd get along well with other people. So, James would be my second pick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend and support our mayor, councilmember Mayor Laynes. It's really important that Cloverdale have a seat at the table. You know, with a northern, uh, forgotten child. And I still wonder if the train is ever going to come to Cloverdale. So, that's why we need advocates on that board. And I'd like it to be Mayor Laynes. And that's it. There's no second committee.
Yes, sir. I also support you talking to that position to get the train to Cloverdale. So, all of the forums through and to talk about that forums, that's what I want to see down.
My support is from Mayor Laynes. And we do have two seats for this simple support. So, I know that people have worked on previously, that have really advocated for it. One time, Mayor, I believe you're going to be just a killer for Cloverdale on this going. And I'll come back down and all that. And I think you'll be a great seat to get in there. So, you know, my obvious number one, next one would be Ariel Killen.
But still open for me to vote at this point. I've been on SCA for about three minutes, and so I'm not expecting nomination, to be honest. But I know that I have a couple of voices. If it's nominee, I can advocate for Cloverdale and will work hard for us. So, I will push to get at least one of them and get the best of them. The third one, the third seat is a non SCA appointment. There's one seat and there are four people. First one is Victoria Fleming from San Rosa. Second one is Chris Harrod from Hillsburg. Third one is Alex Carley from Petaluma. And the fourth one is Sylvia Williams from Petaluma.
I think it's great that Alex came up here tonight and introduced himself. And so, I am going to pick Alex DeCarly. And he's, you know, got the enthusiasm that's needed to be on board.
Well, I could agree with that, but I'd like to hear what exactly his position is on the train coming to Cloverdale. We know he's going to get up and see him right in Cloverdale, but how hard is he actually going to play this?
Well, I'm sure you'll not figure out the seat. I'm from Nebraska.
Yeah, I also appreciate your time, Alex stepping up. Having communities, community service leaders like yourself, so yes, I would support Alex.
Just, I just need a little non SCA appointment.
So, SCA is the original one that I said on?
Yes.
Is this one somebody's not on that board? They get the question for the one for Smart. So, you usually have to be on SCA to go up to the one for Smart. This is one for Smart.
I also like Alex on this one. So, I believe I would put in, I know the other folks on there. And I appreciate you coming up. That's not the only reason I could draw all the way to Cloverdale, is to get on the SCA. But I appreciate you got some enthusiasm and I think you'd be a good choice. So, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for all of your support so far. And as I say, everybody's probably going to say they want the train to come to Cloverdale. I'm trying to get Cloverdale's load. I would actually take a step further than to say that I don't think Cloverdale's far enough. I think we need to go further. But that itself is a big hurdle. But I do have a decade worth of experience in Velody. And I think that would be a unique perspective to the board. Most people probably don't know much about trains to give it. But, you know, part of, too, why I say I want to go beyond Cloverdale is because the department platform in Petaluma is our economy and Sonoma County as a whole. And freight is kind of the Achilles heel of the railroad. It has to be subsidized and it's kind of, it's there and it's actually very necessary because Smart is a common carrier and they need that. So, you know, I want to see freight coming up. I think it's very important. I think it can help make the railroad stand strong. And, you know, I also, and I'm not part of the group, but I'm on the Board of Directors for the Northwestern Pacific Pilates Oral Society. Tom, just here. And, you know, we have the guys from Golden Gate, you know, in the room too. And so, we get updates from them regularly. I know the rights are very important to you guys. And that's a new thing that helps the tourism and the community. And I know they're going through their struggles right now, which probably aware of. But, you know, I'd like to see more stuff like that too. And I know they don't bring steam up here as well. So, for all of those reasons, you know, I'd really like to be on for Smart.
Thank you. Let me ask you one quick question, Alex. What is your time of life if you were appointed to all of us, are you able to do all of it?
I do just kind of get something off. I usually have to sacrifice all my sleep, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more thing, I don't need this to that. But, you know, you have a good point about tourism and freight. But, you know, to me, that train coming to Cloverdale is a little more than that. It's a lifeline. You know, God forbid that we are to evacuate this city. We're even going to go north on 101 and we're going to go south and we draw out 128. Parking lots, all of them, within a couple of hours. But if we could get a train up here and build some people on it and bring them south, it would be fantastic. The same with the water situation. For some reason, we really needed water. We could put a couple of big tankers on that train and bring them up here. So, it's not just about the freight and the tourism, it's a safety factor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Anyone else have anything?
I'd just like to speak on Alex's behalf as well. I can attest to him being a very hard worker and he does sacrifice his sleep a lot. Alex is also a holler for me for North Cal Life Talk Evacuation during fires. And he goes on several days straight with no sleep because I run a tank ship. So, I know, I can promise you all that he'll work really hard. He always consistently steps up to the occasion. Whenever we have things like Measure J or the fires or anything like that, Alex will always step up to help the community. This is the type of a guy that he is, that's why he drove up here tonight to talk to all of you. So, I know that he would be an advocate for all of you to make sure that you, he hears what you want as well. He's very good listening. To me, he's the kind of guy that our county needs to be able to understand what other cities in our county also want and need. I will also say, he's not going to tell you how much he loves trains, but both the history of trains and the potential future of trains. He has model trains, it's something that he's studying his whole life. It's okay to love a parking baby, but he absolutely has a passion for them. And so, to me, he's the kind of guy that we want doing something like this because he can bring that passion to the whole, to the whole thing. He'll teach a few of you about trains as well, so make it fun. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you all.
Thank you. Now she's going to the other one.
Yeah.
Mike can say, they're not model trains, they're full size.
Wait, real for you, man.
All right. So, with that, with the flexibility, you know, Alex is a great choice. There's one other that I think is a great choice. And we'll see how the discussion goes. But I have you guys to guide me this in the direction. Next, thank you guys for that. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next is the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, four, one seat, one person. Next is the Golden Gate Bridge Highway and Transportation District, sorry. One seat, two letters. Gerard Judice and Frank Quint from Petaluma. Gerard is already elected. I think that they'd be built there looking to build these aspiring seats. So, he is, he wants to go back. He is also on the Smart, or, or, platform. He can just support you one of, I got anyone made. And the last one here is Sonoma County Consultative Oversight Board. There's one seat and there's two letters. Jackie Elwood from LaFerne and Stephen Zolman from Sevastopol. So, you don't have any preference. Jackie, Jackie Elwood is, okay.
Jackie.
Okay. So, Jackie's your first on that one? Got it. Has no older name? Okay. Well, that looks like we've made it through all of those appointments. And thank you for the ability to make decisions for me. Thank you and good luck to everyone, Alex. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on. No, one direction, right. I'm sorry.
Was both of you on the same team?
Yeah, that's why they, these two have gotten up and talked about this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just a little.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to recognize that the Smart representative, or someone who represented us on the Smart Committee, I believe was Molly Backing in the past. And I thought that she did a great job of really working really hard to get the Smart train to come as far north as it has. And so, I would just like to say that if Alex feels that he can be a very good advocate for having it come all the way to the city where a lot of people don't know who we are, have never believed that it's actually going to get here. I've had people in Cloverdale say, maybe not in my lifetime. And I would say back to them, well, maybe not, but I hope in my lifetime, if they do feel that it was going to come. So, I would just support Alex if he's going to be that kind of person who's just going to go until he gets the job done. Because I really would like to see it happen in my lifetime. I think that you have a little bit more time than I do, but I'm going to support you in making that happen.
And he needs your support continuing to lie too. You have to put to help. That was an hour.
All right. And so, I just want to say one thing is that when there was a meeting for Smart in San Rafael, during my time, I sang a train song to encourage everybody to know how wonderful trains can be. So, I would give myself at your disposal, if you ever need me to do that.
You got a singer. Thank you. And you're absolutely right, we have to advocate for ourselves. We had to fight to get ourselves put on the 2050 map. They left us off of it, stopped the train. So, Councilmember Bagby worked hard on that and advocated for us when she was on the Smart board at that one. And she made a difference at that seat. That's why I'm on it. It's not because it's my biggest interest in the world and where I want to spend my time and does my business well. So, it is because we need to have a train here. It is a huge lifeline, as Councilmember Walter called it. And I've worked hard with Joanne Harper, who is one of the main people, called her ransom money. It is funny to get a train here, I've worked with her for about 12 years now, on and off. And we work very well together. And we're going to push the freight angle, we're going to push the train angle, we're going to push a hub for Minnesota Bay, Sonoma County here, which will bring a lot, a lot of, a lot of money, a lot of tourism, a lot of development for us.
So, you were the first person to do the second?
There's two different, no, there's two different, so, I'll explain, I'm sorry. There's two different voting areas. One is where people are on an SCA committee. And I'm on that committee and there's two seats available for that one. And then, there's one seat for people that aren't on an SCA committee. And that's the one that's probably important, he's on that. So, we both, we're not competing against each other.
Okay.
Best case scenario, it could be, you know, we get everyone who wants the train to come here. Get them on that one. Thank you. Anything else for me? Great. With that, don't get any further direction, I understand, we're good, great. We'll move on to, I think, Legislative Board Slayers of Support or Opposition. Thank you. City Manager Report.
Just, the legislature is coming up. We're going to have a couple booths, both the PE and City Hall. So, if you'd like to swing by and say hi or help us out, please do. We'll be there from Friday noon to probably Sunday evening. And I think we break it down on the evening.
Thank you. So, anytime that any council member has available to put in, it'd be great to have you volunteer a little bit and meet your community. Great, thank you. City Attorney Report.
Nothing.
Thank you. Subcommittee Reports, we had our first admin subcommittee yesterday. It was a very good meeting and it threw a lot of different things. There was the beginning of the budget audit, through water, through cannabis, it's all on the recording. If you want to watch it, it'd be a great meeting to watch. If you want the meeting minutes, as soon as they come available, they'll be online. Anything with that, any others? Subcommittee, 2025? Great. All the improvements and agendas will be on our website. If you want to see them and join the meetings, great. We had lots of people that are meeting yesterday, it was a good time. Councilmember Reports, go around the room and Councilmember Lasky, who are you from the board? Vice Mayor.
Well, if you have any reports, we actually are, instead of, if you see them, the Sonoma County Airport always says, we determined it's actually going down tomorrow. And so, I'll have something after that.
Great. Councilmember Morton's turn.
I haven't been, you know, I've just been going to my regular meetings. But I've also been doing like webexes and things for Stock Abbot. And also, I'm doing some other online advocacy online where you talk to people, either your congressman or people from Congress about wanting, trying to get more funding for testing.
Councilmember Walter.
First thing I will say, I report how long has I been working hard to advocate for the Potter Valley Project. I've been in contact with about anybody I can find that wants to listen, that's higher than me. Just anyone that wants to hear me talk. The Potter Valley Project, if you're not familiar with it, please get yourself familiar with it. Because in the next few years, you're not going to have enough water here to take a shower every day. And so, you really need to advocate to town to educate yourself and push back against some of our local government that's trying to make this happen. It's not about P G A that owns a dam, wants to take the dam out. P G's just surrendering. It's the government that's not taking over, that wants to take the dam out, which will stop the water coming to Cloverdale. So, as a city, we're doing our best with the water money that we get through your water bills. We are putting in tanks. We're doing well this year, we're doing everything that we can to have as much as possible. However, it doesn't look like the government wants this out here. So, please educate yourself if you want to go to meetings. The first, I think it's March 13th, is a copy with the mayor at the Senior Center. And we will have someone there talking about the Potter Valley Project and what it's going to actually mean to us. I have a meeting with Senator Rogers this week. I have a meeting coming up with Senator Newwire. And I have a contact who is pushing to possibly getting in contact with the governor at this point to try to do everything we can to stop it. But I'm a lonely small town mayor, so it's, you know, pretty much headway. But we're working with Ukiah, and Ukiah has now filed lawsuits against them. We're working to get in contact and work hand in hand with Ukiah and anyone else that we can. Fire departments are getting on board with me at this point. They contacted me, the fire chiefs are all contacting me and trying to get letters of support to stop this project and everything that's going on. And I know there's other advocacy groups, they're out there trying to do what they can to at least delay or change the ideas that they have. Because the ideas that they have do not, they don't support life in our area from the Potter Valley basins to us. The last thing I want to talk about is Gus Walter. He's done a very good job of being elusive with the day that he's going to leave us. I thought it was tomorrow, then it's changed until two weeks from now. And now, as of tonight, he said, oh yes, tomorrow. So, my speech was not prepared for him, and I apologize. Because I didn't think we'd be able to see it. Gus, for a reason, I'm on council. And I guess on you, I might like it less because of that now, but it's okay. Gus has been an advocate for Cloverdale the entire time he's been here. He moved here in 96. He's been on council for 23 years over his time here. He worked for the banks here in town. His family was here in town, whether it's in-laws, kids, everyone. And he's true Cloverdale. And, you know, his wife already moved out to Pennsylvania. And she really wants him there, and I understand. Family's more important than what you're doing. And I'm thankful for your friendship, thankful for the time you've put in for our town. And you're a big, big issue to me, Gus, and I will always return to you because you are the institution most that will no longer have on this council. And it's sad to think that I'm the long-term president sitting here at that point because I'm far from ready for that. So, I can't say enough. And I miss you, we all love you, and praying for everything happens to you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank you for those kind words. And, you know, you have a wonderful community, Cloverdaleans are fantastic. What I like about it is some come to the meetings and tell us exactly what they want. And new council members, to listen to Cloverdale. It's not a low and humongous public that neither wants. And I'm sorry, I missed Cloverdale, but it's unfortunate that I can't stay. I'll just give you one quick story. When I first drove through Creek, Cloverdale in 1991, I was here on vacation to Northern California. My wife and I went to Mendocino. We came by past a hamburger ranch. The bypass was not quite completed yet. And I stopped for gas in Rich Hellebee's gas station, which is where the Napa Auto Store is. And it was hot, it was a summer day, it was a four lane, rumbley highway. Not a speck of shade anywhere on that boulevard. And I went in to get gas and Rich just won't get out of the way. He's just standing there with a straw hat on. And finally, I got mine, I paid for my gas, I pumped it, I got to the car and I said to my wife, let's get the hell out of this town. Little did I know, a few years later, we would come back and purchase the bed and breakfast, the vintage towels bed and breakfast, which my wife operated for quite a few years, until we bought a settlement over in third in commercial. And then I went to work for Exchange Bank and what a wonderful institution that is with the Doyle Scholarship and owning 50% of the stocks and what they do for the community. But I don't mean to ram wrong, but it's been a pleasure living here in Cloverdale and serving you and the community. And I advise my fellow council members to listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
I know this isn't all, is anybody in the audience want to say anything?
Hi, it's Mark, we're again. Gus, I respect and admire you so much and I thank you for everything you've done. You were one of the first three people that I met when I came to Cloverdale. And it was at the candidate meeting, the very first one after I got here. And it's been a pleasure. And I thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mark.
So, my name is Loureya, and I think that I would just like to echo for, ever since I've come to Cloverdale, Gus has always been here. Not necessarily on the city council, that's not the way that I initially remembered him being there. But because he was a friend of my father's, Glenn Miles, for a really long time. They'd always have coffee together. And so, you became for me a part of what made this town special at that time. So, I'm sorry you're leaving, but I know you'll be happy where you're going. And I just want to say that I appreciate everything that you've given over the years to this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne, we're at Petaluma again here. And I would just like to say I'm glad that I was here at this meeting because this is an inspirational meeting, seeing how all of you work together. Gus, you are clearly a phenomenal man. And so, thank you for the work that you have put in. You're setting a standard for everybody else. And going from Petaluma and seeing how you guys all work together, this is just, it's really cool. So, you've done a good job, you know, leading in the way that you have, so that's all.
Thank you, Joanne. I'll pass down the table from the side. Do you think this?
Yeah, I think, just thanks to Gus for all the service, all the trust you put into the police department and myself. You always supported us. Really, without you, you know, we would not be in the place that we are today. And you pushed that tax measure, you knew we needed it, we needed it. You had the courage to come out and support that tax measure. And you were the opposition. And we couldn't be more grateful. You gave us the tools that we need to provide service and to keep up with technology within the community of law enforcement. The track will come and work for us if you care about the work that we do and for the community. And my neighbor, I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Here's a place to thank you for your years of community service. And also, you've served in the honor of, and if someone has told you, welcome.
Thank you. Got me on that one. Gus, thank you very much. And you've always been, since the day I met you, when we started, when I, we started running for this. And knowing the stories you've told me, the dedication that you've put into this for 23 years, the sacrifice you've put into this for 23 years, it's just ongoing service, service to Cloverdale, and your service in the military. You got me involved in the VA over there, met some great guys in town. They're long-term Cloverdaleans. You know, I consider them friends, it's something you can lean on. And I would hope as a veteran, you know what I mean? You can always lean on any of us and make sure, make sure you're taken care of. So, thank you for your service. Like Todd said, this town is going to miss you. We love you, man, and good luck doing what you do, you know what I mean?
Thank you, too.
I'm, well, I'm really going to miss you. I know your family needs you and they miss you. But I was hoping you'd be here longer and I'm hoping you'd come back sooner than ever. And I'm going to miss your wisdom and your guidance about life. And most of all, I'm going to miss your support.
You can call me anytime, you've got my number.
I will, I will be calling.
Thank you.
I saw the echo with the Vice Mayor saying, you know, 22 years is a long time just to show up. And he's done so much more than that. And he's been so dedicated to the city, he's always been very toward them. And he's put so much trust in me and the city staff, and I know we all appreciate that so much.
You know, I just have to take a minute and thank my wife for putting up with me, you know, the council for 23 years. She's come to one meeting and that was the very first meeting that I took. That was it, and wanted to come back again. So, I think it was a good mistake to take me out of the house. So, thank you.
Gus, just real quick, thank you so much for your confidence in me. I just want to say something, you always had good ideas. I always, never thought some of the things that you brought up, and they were good ideas. And really appreciate your creative. I always, never thought some of the things that you brought up, they were good ideas, and really appreciate your creative way of thinking of all things and presenting things. Good luck with your new back east, back east life, and I'm just really gonna miss you a lot.
Thank you, Kevin, you enjoyed that, uh, that birthday that you're making.
Yes, I certainly did.
I've been here for a short amount of time, but I have a board with some horrible projects, and I do appreciate it. His outlook and his ability to, you know, the staff, you know, guide, guide us through making decisions and all that. With that many years in the council, it's a fact that it's gonna be a multi-generation job. So I appreciate it, Gus, thank you.
Hi, Shirley Davis. Gus, I wanted to say I appreciate your, you know, your years, especially when you're retired. But what I want to wish you is the best, and I know you're gonna be writing a new chapter, so, fill in one.
Yeah, Shirley said, well, I'm sorry, Gus, but you're, you're part of the community, and we've had different meetings all over the state, as nobody has. And we'll be here, you know, so I'll leave it at that. So thank you for everything, and thank you for being such a wonderful person.
Good time to be here again with you.
Thank you. I'll do make that one. All right, we'll move forward, future agenda items.
Future agenda items.
I know, I know, you, I know you got one.
Future agenda item, I want to see the, uh, we've talked about the operator training position, um, for the, to have somebody get down to the water plant, start that part of succession. Kind of like see O I T be placed on the 26th, uh, agenda, so we can just get it on the board.
I was thinking, I mean, this is, I'm just throwing this out.
Stories, is it different than this? Just want to make sure the word is good, that everyone's a good way to go on the next agenda.
Well, my idea was, and I just want to hear what everybody else has to say about it, but maybe we should have a town hall so we can talk about, like, shelters, so we can get more people to work for us.
Absolutely, uh, so we've had, at one point, we had James Ward, I think Brad Sherwood, coming to speak in Snow Water. And then we had, oh gosh, David something.
David.
David. Thank you, David Taylor's here. And so David Taylor's been coming to the call for the mayor. Once I get some more information from the, the higher-ups, then definitely want to have to, that everyone can have a really, our, our, that's what we're, so we have a great game there too.
And maybe we could even get some people from the Congress that are aboard, and like have a group come together, sort of.
I went to, I went to a town hall in Lake Hurley, and I saw how they did it, who they had, and they had half the story. And I really want to actually have a full town hall debate and go right. So we really need to be organized on this, and to make sure that we do, because we're gonna be one shot. And so absolutely agree, that's something that we will push forward between Kevin and Alex and I, and we'll make sure that we'll get it on, on the calendar really soon. But we'll make sure that we have the information first.
And maybe we can include, like, even just a little bit something in each newsletter, just to keep it in front of people.
It's a great idea. Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Okay. Or Kevin's? No, is there something? Okay. All right, well, with that, thank you all, and Gus, your final meeting is adjourned, 7:30, 7.